I will now call the October 2nd, 2023 Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. We have an unusual night tonight where I have two scout troops present. And they're gonna come up and line up in harmony like they've been working together for a long, long time. You can start making your way up here. Don't be shy. Just kinda line up here and we're gonna face the flag. And when I give you the signal, after we have a moment of silence, you will lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance. Got that? All right.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We wanna thank our troops and we have them. Where's my paper? You can be seated.
Good job, you guys.
So don't let this be a one-time thing for you. Come back and see us again, okay? Okay? Yes. All right. Okay, next we'll have a confirmation of a quorum.
Councilmember Kayler.
Present.
Levisey.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Edmondson.
Present.
Culpepper.
Present.
Mayor Ross.
Yes, here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, next we have the consent agenda unless there are items that need to be pulled. I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levisey.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carrie Dunan O'Shea.
Next we have a public hearing on annexation of property south of southeast Sunnyside School Road and west of southeast Adams Dairy Parkway.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. The city council information form dated September 5th, 2023 with the following attachments: Site location maps, petition of voluntary annexation with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on September 23rd, 2023, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, and bill approving annexation. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Thank you. Staff report.
I do. Adair Bright, 903 West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in. Before you this evening is a request to approve an annexation of approximately 51.06 acres into the city. The property is generally located south of southeast Sunnyside School Road and west of southeast Adams Dairy Parkway. This request is for the public hearing and first reading of the bill for the proposed annexation. The second reading is scheduled for the October 16th, 2023 city council agenda. There is currently no development proposed on the property and nothing existing. The annexation petition was received August 29th, 2023, and the initial public hearing is occurring within the state statutes required 60 days. Staff believes that the proposed annexation meets the general criteria for annexations as outlined under Missouri Revised Statutes 71.012, that the property is contiguous and compact to the existing corporate limits of the city, that the annexation is reasonable and necessary to the proper development of the city, and the city is able to furnish normal municipal services to said area within a reasonable time after annexation. Staff recommends approval of the annexation, and I am here for any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Culpepper?
Yes, I know I've had a lot of questions about this property, and I just want to restate the information that I have, which is that there is no specific project right now for this property to be developed. This is strictly to bring it into the city.
Anyone else? Councilmember Fowler?
Yeah, I guess, I think staff can go ahead and confirm this, that when it comes in, it'll be zoned as it is today agricultural.
When it gets annexed, it will, yes.
For any other development, it'd have to be zoned that way. So that would, there'd be a public hearing at that point in time. One of the things I wanna bring up, and it's not exactly about this property, but then again, it kinda is, is that when, obviously, the property gets developed, there's gonna be more rain-water runoff. Well, just to the west there, there's, where Sandstone is, that storm drainage back behind those houses, it can have some of the higher velocity and grow in size more than most anyplace I've seen in the city when it really gets to rain, and it all drains onto that property. So I'm just saying, hey, that it's gotta be able to handle all that, plus whatever new stormwater drainage that it has. So I want everybody to be looking for that when it is time for development, which it sounds like it's gonna be a little all out still. Okay?
Anyone else from council for staff? Okay, thank you, staff. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Do you wanna come up and be sworn in? Maybe answer any questions council might have?
I do. Jeff Seems, 29203 Southeast Ryan Road, Blue Springs.
Okay. Is there anything that you would like to add this night in the staff report?
Not at this time.
Counsel, are there any questions from you? That was easy. Not even my easy, but.
I know.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? Support of, opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Next we'll have the introduction and first reading only of Bill 536.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading only of Bill 5136, and ordinance annexing 51.06 plus or minus acres of property located south of southeast Sunnyside School Road and west of southeast Adams Dairy Parkway to the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading today tonight.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same side, motion cameras. We'll move on to the next public hearing. Rezoning and general development plan for Silver Line.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated September 26th, 2023 with the following attachments: Staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on September 9th, 2023, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Conference of Plan by reference, bill approving the rezoning, and bill approving the general development plan. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Thank you. Staff report.
I do. Adair Bright, 903 West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in. The next items on the agenda are requests for a rezoning and a general development plan with alternative development standards for Silver Line Trucking at 1050 Cemetery Road. The subject property is located east of Cemetery Road and sits between eastbound 40 Highway and westbound 40 Highway. The first request is for a rezoning from general business to light industrial. The rezoning is necessary to allow for the requested use of warehouse distribution center, which is only allowed in light industrial or heavy industrial. The property is currently in the code violation process as the property has been used as a storage yard without city approval, and the current zoning does not allow for the proposed land use. Staff is supportive of the rezoning due to the existing industrial nature along 40 Highway and the adjacent land uses being of similar intensity. The second request is for a general development plan. The applicant is proposing to construct a 6,670-square-foot building on the northern part of the site to support the warehouse distribution center land use. The site is currently developed as a parking lot, which used to be the MoDOT commuter lot. The applicant is proposing to keep the existing access off Cemetery Road and construct a six-foot-wide ADA-compliant sidewalk along the Cemetery Road frontage. All parking requirements have been met, 16 required parking stalls, including one ADA stall, and the plans show compliance with parking stall size and drive aisle width. The applicant has requested alternative development standards because the site would have to be significantly modified in order to come into conformance with the UDC. The modifications include reducing the minimum front setback from 40 feet to 20 feet, requesting to exceed the maximum access widths. The UDC limits the access to 30 feet, and the applicant is proposing 76, waiving the requirement for a five-foot-wide sidewalk connecting the public realm to the building entrance, and reducing the required buffer on the northwest corner of the site from 15 feet minimum to two feet. Staff supports the request because the site has three frontages, meaning the front setback would apply to the northwest and south sides, making the property difficult to develop. The access is existing, and modification might hinder the ability to allow large trucks into the site. The property will be surrounded with a six-foot fence and will have a security gate, so it won't be a property utilized by the general public, and the pavement is all existing, and the applicant is requesting to utilize the existing pavement, which results in the need for the reduced buffer. There is a conceptual landscaping plan provided, but a final landscape plan will be reviewed during the site plan design review process. The provided building elevations show the building consisting of cement panels, a metal roof, and masonry. All mechanical equipment has been placed on the east side of the building to comply with UDC requirements, and screening of the equipment will be reviewed with the site plan design review. If all three applications are approved, the previous one being the preliminary plat, which was approved by Planning Commission on September 25th, the applicant will be required to final plat the site along with a site plan design review application to finalize site specifics. Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 25th and recommended unanimous approval of the rezoning and general development plan with the staff conditions. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, approval of the general development plan with six conditions. Some of those conditions include that the general development plan shall expire after one year of approval if the following does not occur. A site plan design review shall be approved within six months of general development plan approval, and a building permit shall be issued within one year of general development plan approval. Also, there shall be no outdoor overnight parking of trucks or outdoor storage of vehicles and/or materials, equipment, et cetera, unrelated to the warehouse distribution center land use. The proposed use does not include the storage yard land use, and a storage yard land use is not being reviewed and/or approved at this location. Staff feels as though the mentioned conditions, along with the others outlined in the staff report, are reasonable and justified due to the code violations previously mentioned and the length of time that has been occurring. And I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from Councilmember Levisey?
The proposed use of this application, is it only allowed in a light industrial zoning? Could this also be in a general business with a conditional use permit?
It's only allowed in light industrial and heavy industrial.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. But a staff report. Applicant present? Would you like to come up and be sworn in?
I do.
Did you get the name?
Good evening.
Give him your name and address.
William Moore, 4510 Bellevue Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri.
Can you proceed?
Good evening.
Anything you'd like to add to?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no, I, we do not have anything to add at this point. I'm the attorney for the applicant. We've reviewed this. We've been working with the planning department on the application, and we are comfortable with all of the conditions that have been placed on this application.
Any questions from the council?
Your Honor.
Or the applicant? Yes, Councilmember Kayler.
I have several questions and concerns. Maybe Mr. Moore can answer them, maybe he can't, because he's an attorney and not the owner, but I'm gonna ask him anyways. That's all right with you, Your Honor. Do you know how long they've been presently at this location?
You know, I don't think I can answer that. Ms. Bright can answer. I think it's been at least since the beginning of this year.
Okay.
Perhaps, perhaps maybe a little bit longer, because we've been working with the planning department.
Okay. Ms. Bright, could you help me with that?
To my knowledge, the site has been occupied, I believe, since March of 2022.
Thank you. And do you happen to know what the RV is sitting there in the parking lot, is what it's for?
He is using that RV right now as kind of, it's a personal RV, nobody is living in it, and occasionally they're using it for office purposes until they get their building built.
Okay. And how many violations have this property received since they've been there?
I believe, I believe it's two. Two violations.
Okay, so, so are we doing this because we've been cited several times for this, or do they comply? Because my fear is that there was a statement made, and I quote, "No overnight parking of trucks or outdoor storage of vehicles or materials, equipment, et cetera, unrelated to the warehouse distribution land use." My fear is that ever since this has been going on, is there's been storage there. There's trucks been there, trailers been there, and my fear is that we're not gonna comply to anything, and the storage being used, but not, you know, just for, not just a few weeks, but it's been several, several months, if not years, that they've been in noncompliance. And I'm, I'm really hesitant about this because it appears to me that you were coming now to the, to try to do all this because we have failed to obey and comply with ordinances, and now we're wanting to change things. And what I really, I really have a problem with is, is people not, you know, by our city ordinances and then coming in here wanting to change ordinances to surround them and to work for them. So I, I don't know with that. I'll vote when I vote.
Is there anything that you would like to expound on that would clear up the council members' concerns?
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me, let me give it a shot anyway. I do know that my client, when he originally purchased his property, and, you know, he's not sophisticated in kinda all the laws and the nuances of municipalities and land use. And when he purchased it, he, I know he asked the seller if, he told him what the proposed use was going to be, and the seller said, oh yeah, that's not a problem, you can do that because the neighbor over here is having a similar use. And so he went ahead and purchased it and began using it, and that's when the code violations occurred. Once the code violations occurred, he contacted my office, and we began working with him, working through the planning department, with trying to come up with a plan that would address these, these issues. He's fully aware that the use, as it's currently, under the current zoning, is incorrect, which is why we're requesting the rezoning, which will allow it to be illegal, illegal use. The buildings that are being constructed, or the building that is being constructed, will then enclose all of the, all of the stuff that's currently visible, and the vehicles that are there will, if they're not related to the underlying business, will, will not be allowed to be there. He understands that. He understands the penalty for failure to comply with the, with the regulations of the city. He understands that full well at this point because he's already received two code violations. We have engaged the services of an architect. We've engaged services of a engineering firm, and the result of which you, you see tonight and you're in the application. We believe it's a very nice-looking building. The site plan is, is a challenge, but with the help of the planning department and, and through the implementation of the development with these conditions, we believe this is going to be a very nice addition to the city of Blue Springs.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Your Honor. In the conditions, I believe you said, I'm kinda, both of you, but overnight storage not related to the business? That was one of the conditions, right? No overnight storage not related to the business?
So it's number five, no outdoor overnight parking of trucks or outdoor storage of vehicles and/or materials, equipment, et cetera, not related to the warehouse distribution center land use.
Okay, then my question to you, sir, would be, what could we expect for overnight storage or parking of vehicles that are related to the business? Because that would not be prohibited based upon those conditions.
Right. I, I think you would, you could expect that, at least in materials, would be, again, inside the building, so there wouldn't be any materials that would be stored outside. With respect to vehicles, the vehicles that might be there from, from time to time on an ongoing basis are going to be vehicles that are, that are directly related to this distribution business. The nature of this business is that the semis bring the trailers in with materials, and materials are offloaded, those trucks leave, other trucks come in, pick up the materials, and distribute it elsewhere within the region or across the country. So there would be no need on an ongoing basis for any significant amount of vehicles actually parking on the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Yeah. Do you know what the timeline is on construction on this?
It is imminent. I know he has, again, and I know Kathy, I don't know if I put you on the spot or not, but, but he has met with the, with the architect. They have together met with, with a general contractor that is going to be bidding on the job. So the, the idea would be to go forward with this as soon as possible. Again, we, we understand, we're within that one, one-year window that we have to come into compliance and get this, this completed. So sooner, rather later is going to be the, the expectation here.
Councilmember Culpepper, did you have anything? Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Go to the public. Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? Support of, opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce Bill Number 5137?
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill 5137, and ordinance approving rezoning property from GB General Business to LI Light Industrial for Silver Line.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Levisey.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I think my concerns are more to do with the rezoning of this property. If you kinda look at the map, the zoning map, I think it's on 297, you can see Cemetery Road is kind of a natural border, natural boundary to where the general business begins to the east and the light industrial begins to the west. We have, it's not even really light industrial. There's a PD there because of longstanding businesses and longstanding buildings that already exist there just to the north of this property, and even those have only been changed recently. I think if you go a little further east, you might see like the car wash be light industrial, but I think this is too heavy a use for this property. I think general business is the appropriate zoning, and the type of businesses we would get from general business is appropriate zoning for this property. So that's my concern is the rezoning. Once we rezone it to light industrial, that opens up the door to a lot of heavier uses, maybe even more heavier than a logistics center. I am familiar with logistics, cross-docking and that kinda thing, and there are often trucks parked overnight, parked in the bays, waiting for the next delivery at all hours of the night. And this was before this owner, I think, used as a truck parking facility after the state sold it, and we got a lot of complaints about trucks parking in this property. So I think this use is not appropriate for this property, and I have the concern with the zoning, so.
Anyone else? Councilmember Edmondson?
I know the staff could answer this. If this gets approved, does this satisfy the violations, or do they still stand?
Currently, there are two violations on the property. There is a fence, the chain link fence that was built around the perimeter of the property was built without a permit. If this general development plan and the subsequent site plan design review are approved, the fence that they're proposing is a solid screen fence, so that would, that fence would come down, so that would solve that one eventually. If the property is, the other violation is for the storage yard land use, which is the parking of trucks overnight, or storage of any kind of recreational vehicles or storage of materials on a site, that is, that is only allowed with a conditional use permit in light industrial. That is not being applied for tonight. So the approval or the rezoning would not allow the storage yard to be indefinite. It would allow only the distribution land use and other light industrially-zoned land uses as a use by right, but the general development plan that you would be approving, if approved, would only be for that warehouse distribution use in the building as you've seen now. So it wouldn't solve it, I mean, the violation wouldn't go away because they have a year to construct it, but it would bring it further into conformance with the city code.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. I guess a good discussion by the council here tonight, bringing some issues forward that are good, good for, to think about here. Staff, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is your recommendation still to support this package as a going-forward plan?
Yes, staff does recommend approval of this. The business, the staff also recommended approval, and the council approved the rezoning of the property next door for, well, it was triad roofing at the time for a business and construction contractor with outside storage. That has since traded hands to Landtel Communications, and they store a bunch of outdoor materials on there. And so because of the build, the construction of the building to help with the material, you know, storage and visibility of that, and then the buffering being provided by the landscaping and the solid screen fence felt that it helped minimize the visual impacts of having trucks out there. And in essence, the, if the applicant working with MoDOT on some public improvements to the roadways and the idea of having trucks in and out of the property was able to be deemed safe, which they have been working with MoDOT, then staff did feel that there was a appropriate incompatible land use with the property next door and some of the industrial areas that are further to the west.
And that was the question, another question that I can kinda see on the map where Jackson County is, but the property within the median, there's also a heavy metal fabrication or ivy business right there. Is that like industrial, already zoned that way in the city of Blue Springs?
Yeah, the one immediately to the west.
Yeah.
With the gray color.
Yeah.
And that is light industrially-zoned.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, so we've had a motion, and a first, and a second.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but I am gonna say something. The six-foot fence barely would cover Councilmember Fowler's pickup truck, so I don't know how you're gonna hide a semi-truck in there. Just saying. Thank you.
Staff, you'd like to address that? As far as a six-foot, I mean, we could, we could make a requirement.
Yeah, the city council could, could certainly make a condition of approval that'd be raised to eight feet, which would be perfectly allowable in the industrial, light industrial zoning district. That's, as long as it met site distance, visibility parameters and locations. That's certainly something that the council could put a restriction on, but in terms of solid privacy fencing and a landscape buffer, the staff felt that that was better than what we attempted to do on the property next door, which was the chain link fence with the windscreen around it, and so hasn't worked out, you know, and we have to live in. have to live and learn. So that's why we made it be a privacy fence in this case. But the six-foot height was what was proposed by the applicant, and that's what staff felt was appropriate, but we would certainly support any kind of condition that raised that height.
Counsel member Cole Pepper?
Yeah, I just want clarification, please. What I heard was that there would be nothing stored outside other than these trucks. All equipment, everything else would be inside storage. Correct?
That is our understanding, is that, but as you, with some of these other distribution centers, such as the Pepsi Building up on Jefferson, there are trailers, you know, semi-trailers that are not attached to the truck itself that do sit outside while they're being waited to be, you know, dropped off, picked up by another, and then taken on. So it is my understanding that some of those trailers out there do hold some equipment from time to time, and that that would be maybe what is outside, is, is, any equipment would be on a trailer being prepped to be moved again, because that is their business as the applicant suggested. But staff's condition generated from the code concerns and the storage yard concerns of overnight truck, being rented out for weekly or monthly parking for overnight trucking, or the storage of campers or RVs, or, you know, shipping containers for other storage uses, and that's why we made the very, tried to make it as clear as possible that none of that would be allowed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel member, I mean Fowler?
Yeah, I guess on the, the fence, I guess I want to say, I know that area, the way you drive around it on Forty Highway, you've been on West Side of the median, and it seems like it's kind of inefficiental because you're coming and elevated, and I think we can see in there, but if, if an eight-foot fence would help some, you know, colleague say, okay, maybe they want to support it after that, I'd certainly support that. Where I'm at, I, I just see that, you know, staff has spent some time on this, and if that's the green plant path forward for them, I'm gonna support that in this situation. I acknowledge it's got a troubled past. It does, but it, it needs to have a future too.
Any man's vote, take a vote. Okay, first reading. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote same sign?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Counsel member Levise?
No.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Edmanson?
No.
Cole Pepper?
No.
Kayler?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion fills with a vote of six nays to four, to two ayes.
You wanna go to our legal advice? Since the rezoning failed, is there any need to do the rest of it?
No, there's no need to do the rest of it.
Okay, so there's no need to do five-one-three-eight, or five-one-three-nine, or five-one-three-nine? Correct?
Five-one-three-eight.
Since the rezoning failed. Okay, well, we'll move on to item ten. Introduction reading of bill number five-one-four-zero.
Sorry, five-one-three-nine. Five-one-three-nine is.
Which one?
Number nine.
Yeah. Yeah, number nine. I took my line too far. Number nine, introduction reading of bill number five-one-three-nine.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill five-one-three-nine, an ordinance accepting the conveyance of a ten-foot wide permanent pedestrian access easement from Eric C. Rhodes and Margaret D. C. Rhodes for two-six-zero-zero-three, Southwest Mason School Road, Blue Springs, Missouri, six-four-zero-six-four, Rhodes residence.
Your Honor, move the bill to be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote same sign?
Second reading of bill five-one-three-nine.
This is just, this is just an easement that we're allowing for cross-access across their property?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, just double-checking on it.
Second reading of bill five-one-three-nine, an ordinance accepting the conveyance of a ten-foot wide permanent pedestrian access easement from Eric C. Rhodes and Margaret D. C. Rhodes for two-six-zero-zero-three, Southwest Mason School Road, Blue Springs, Missouri, six-four-zero-six-four.
Your Honor, move to approve on the second reading and sign the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counsel member Erickson?
Aye.
Edmanson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-six-zero.
Next introduction reading of bill number five-one-zero-four-zero.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill five-one-four-zero, an ordinance repealing and replacing section three-four-zero-point-three-five-zero of the code of ordinance to the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill to be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Your Honor.
I, I have a question about this.
Go ahead.
Chief, I have a question for you, or maybe for staff as well. We have the ability now in our community to use the digital driver's license, and I believe I've talked to chief about that, and you've told me that that's okay. If I don't have my license, it's approved. But it seems to me like this might be a time to add it on, or do another one where we could say, in the city of Blue Springs, it's okay to use the digital driver's license for identification. Or would that come someplace else? Could we do that into this?
I'm not sure it's necessary. It's just another form of identification, and what's good today may not be good tomorrow.
So if the chief says it's okay, it's okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's good enough, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Counsel member Fowler?
Yeah, one quick clarifying question to our legal staff. The title does say relating to text messaging, and I think I, in my opinion, or I mean, is the law really that you can't be using your phone regardless of, you're not supposed to have your phone in your hands? Is that, is that the true enforcement?
The new law is very specific to text messaging, and then there are some exceptions for having maps available and, and some intricacies of that nature.
I don't know how our, our staff is supposed to tell the difference, but.
Very, very difficult.
Okay.
And this is not, this is a, a violation that can't be primary, so it would be something you get in a car accident, and then you go and pull records, and you're on your phone too, then potentially two tickets involved. It's not.
So there's a specific to text, and pretty much that.
Yes.
Okay, all right, appreciate the, knowing that.
Any other? Now, can we take a first reading vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote same sign?
Second reading of bill five-one-four-zero, an ordinance repealing and replacing section three-four-zero-point-three-five-zero of the code of ordinance to the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and apply the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counsel member Edmanson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-six-one.
Next introduction reading of bill number five-one-four-one.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill five-one-four-one, an ordinance declaring certain parcels of city-owned real property as surplus and authorizing the solicitation of offers for disposition thereof.
Your Honor, move the bill to be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Counsel member Levise?
Just to clarify, this is in accordance with the new ordinance we passed declaring it surplus. The line on the agenda says approving sale, but we're not actually approving the sale of this land, we're just declaring it surplus so it can be marketed for sale. Is that the understanding? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Thank you.
I called with that same question.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote same sign?
Second reading of bill five-one-four-one, an ordinance declaring certain parcels of city-owned real property as surplus and authorizing the solicitation of offers for disposition thereof.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and apply the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counsel member Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmanson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-six-two.
Next introduction reading of bill number five-one-four-two.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill five-one-four-two, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services with Stinson LLP.
Your Honor, move the bill to be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote same sign?
Second reading of bill five-one-four-two, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services with Stinson LLP.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and apply the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counsel member Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmanson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-six-three.
Okay, I'm gonna go to council member Erickson by request for the introduction of bill number five-one-four-three.
Your Honor, I would be pleased to introduce that bill. Thank you.
First reading of bill five-one-four-three, an ordinance appointing Christine Kates to serve as the city administrator of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, establishing the compensation therefore and authorizing the mayor to enter into an employment agreement by and between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, and Christine Kates.
Your Honor, move the bill to be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
This is something that, that I have personally looked forward to. Ms. Kates has been acting in this position several times, and has done an exemplary job, and I'm very excited that this is now happening.
Okay. Today, during my sixteen years as mayor, this come in April, I have appointed four city attorneys, three prosecutors, two judges, and tonight, my second city administrator. Well deserved.
Good selection.
Your, Your Honor.
Yes.
From time to time, the levity of this organization is ditto. I would like to lead a big giant ditto with Jared.
He said it for me.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote same sign?
Second reading of bill five-one-four-three, an ordinance appointing Christine Kates to serve as the city administrator of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, establishing the compensation therefore and authorizing the mayor to enter into an employment agreement by and between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, and Christine Kates.
Your Honor, it's my extreme pleasure, quoting from council members, to approve the second reading and apply the proper ordinance number.
Your Honor, it is my extreme pleasure to second this one.
Ditto.
Is it anybody else's extreme pleasure?
Extreme pleasure, dang it.
Let's go, aye? Okay, roll call, please.
Counsel member Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmanson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-six-four.
All right. That brings us to visitors. I have two visitor appearance forms. One is from, da-da-da-da-da-da, Michelle Floyd. You have three minutes.
Okay. I am still here to express my concern about the rescue-running animal control. I understand the contract's gonna be approved this evening, and why a one-year contract? Why not the four months that you guys were currently doing? I don't appreciate the way that I've been spoke to by one of the officers on Facebook. I have been called foul names on Facebook, which I have screenshots of, and I just think it's very unprofessional. Even last week, they transported animals in the back of a U-Haul van, which is not legal. And I just feel that it's still a conflict of interest that a rescue is running animal control, especially using city resources to further their rescue. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
And so now I've got one year to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Excuse me, I'm really under the weather, and I apologize. I'm not necessarily here to speak against opportunities. I've actually had extensive phone conversations with Jeff Seams, and I think he's a great guy, and I actually really share his vision, and, and I think that they're good for the city. However, I have extreme concerns about the behavior of one of the officers, which I think is ironic. I wonder if it's the same one? So I don't know if you all, you all know that I got, that they came to take my ducks on June twenty-sixth. Y'all have seen me in here since then talking about an ordinance. Well, they came back on August eighth, and I was cited for having my ducks there. But see, what you don't know is what the officer said to me when they came back to do the walkthrough at my house on July fifth. I was told that as long as I don't post, am I too loud?
No, you're just, you're just.
Sorry, is that better?
Yeah.
I was told that as long as I do not post about my ducks on Facebook, which is actually a violation of my First Amendment, but let's not talk about that, as long as I don't post about my ducks on Facebook, as long as my neighbors don't call, and as long as they don't see the ducks at my house when they're driving by, they won't be back to my house. They're closing my case, and they're not gonna climb my fence. But they did climb my fence. The narratives of this officer are completely filled with untruths, and this is not my word against hers. All you have to do is read the narrative and then watch the body camera footage, and you will see that there is dishonesty all the way around. There's body camera footage that exists on August eighth that shows the officer is actually trespassing on my neighbor's property across the street. So the city ordinance says that they can go into any property if there's an animal being, if there's an animal owned in that property. Well, there's no evidence that there's an animal owned at these houses, where they went and walked across the street into the yard and looked in the back yards because they thought there were chickens back there, which there are no chickens back there. I know all my neighbors.